Play me. At this time, we will begin this village board meeting. May I have a call to order? Or may I have a roll call, please?
Trustees DeBoer and Trechel are excused this evening. Trustee Pfeifer?
Here.
President Fannerstil?
Here.
Trustee Walsh Leger?
Here.
Trustee Connor?
Here.
Trustee Holquist?
Here.
We will start this meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have a swearing in. This is for Police Officer Joseph Souther. If you want to use this, you can, just so you have it.
Okay.
I sometimes slip up. I know you'll be just fine. If you'd like to raise your right hand. I, Joseph Souther?
I, Joseph Souther.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and comply with the-
Recording in progress.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin?
The Constitution and laws of the state of Wisconsin.
The charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Heartland?
The charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Heartland.
The rules and regulations of the Heartland Police Department?
The rules and regulations of the Heartland Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics?
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties?
Of my off- as my office, of my office as police officer?
Of my office as police officer.
To the best of my abilities?
To the best of my abilities?
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to Heartland.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You want, you get one?
You got one picture together?
Did you want one? Chief, I'll let you take it from here because they'll get podium time, but I'll let you take it from there.
So we have a badge pinning ceremony, so whoever you'd like to call up to. Guys gonna work together? A little tricky. These are always seem like should be easier. This thing is a little... Is it missing a wheel or something? So we welcome Officer Joe Souther to the Heartland Police Department. He's got almost 15 years' experience with the UW-Malkey Police Department, so we definitely are grateful for bringing that experience here to Heartland. We look forward to you coming on. Officer here at the Heartland Police Department, is there any family you'd like to introduce that?
Yeah, this came up. That was my wife Rachel, my daughter Corinne. I have two twin boys over there in the stroller. My mom Sue, my dad Lee, my sister, Chelsea, my brother-in-law. I have some friends back there.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us for this swearing-in ceremony. It's short, but it's part of becoming the Heartland Police Department family, and we look forward to having Officer Souther join us here at the Heartland Police Department. If there's anything you want to add to that, you're more than welcome.
No, I'm just really excited for the opportunity. I'm ready to get started, so yeah, really appreciate everyone being here. Thank you.
Yeah, in addition to our village board that's present and our village president, that's Officer Souther, we have PFC Commissioner Trevor DeBoer here as well, and thank you for coming and supporting us. Awesome. So with that, anyone that's here for the swearing-in, you don't need to sit here for the rest of the meeting, but we're gonna just go right down the hallway. We have some light refreshments. You can kind of just-
Refreshments.
...uh, talk to each other for a moment and go from there. Thank you.
Welcome to Heartland. Thank you. Congratulations.
They all fix it. Thank you. Look at those little ones. Oh my goodness. Oh, oh my.
There's no problem.
Somebody parking your spot?
Time. Yep.
Is that what you're doing? You jacking them up?
No, we're finishing the floors. I let him know that, like, to make sure the kids don't run on the freshly done floors over there.
Yeah, um, our village manager is not here, and he usually takes care of the Zoom portion. I am now...
Tanya is working it.
Oh, wonderful job, Tanya. Thank you very much. If we have anybody, stop me. Otherwise, I'm gonna move past. If anybody wants to speak in public comments, they can. I won't move past it. Since she's moving towards the agenda. So with that, let's move to our first item of business, which is a consideration of the village board minutes from the March 11th, 2024 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve village board minutes of March 11th, 2024.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the March 11th meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have items related to vouchers for payment in the amount of $76,574.94.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of $76,574.94.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers in the amount of $76,574.94. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have items related, actions related to licenses and permits. We have a special Class B application. This is for the Heartland Chamber of Commerce Street Dance on July 20th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the federal Class B application for the Heartland Chamber of Commerce Street Dance on July 20th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the special Class B application for the Heartland Chamber of Commerce Street Dance on July 20th, 2024. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have items that were referred from the Plan Commission meeting. We have consideration of an extraterritorial certified survey map for the Esq property at 513 Memory Lane. This is in Heartland. I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Felkner, our DPW director, just to give a little background and touch on things as he was not at the Plan Commission meeting.
So I was told that this was coming to the village board from the Planning Commission. They're looking for some clarification on the water, the utility services that service both lots that Mr. Esq owns. In past precedent, in Bristol Cone, there's been six to eight individuals that bought a secondary lot, and then on the primary lots, we allow them to have the service, water service run in, but on the secondary lot that they purchased, the village made them abandon the secondary lot for two reasons. That's a dead-end line, and that water does become stagnant because there's no way to flush it out. And secondarily, that if you have a water main break, it back siphons. So what it'll do, it'll literally suck all the stagnant water back into the main, and we definitely don't want that to happen. This is a little different than a dead-end fire hydrant lead that also Mr. Esq has on his property. We have no concerns with that. So then, we flush yearly every hydrant in the village of Heartland, and that is for two reasons. One of the reasons is to get rid of the stagnant water at the end of a dead end because we could blow it out the nozzles, and then it also is to make sure that the fire hydrant is operational if and when the fire department needs it for service. I don't necessarily have a problem with them combining the two lots. I'm just, all I'm stating to the village board is that in past precedent, if somebody converts two lots, as I stated before, we would make them abandon the secondary water service to that lot.
And to add to that, at the Plan Commission, what was actually referred to the board, which we have to take into consideration, what was referred to the board, that exactly what Mr. Felkner just said, that it was stated, based on my recollection, the minutes are not official for that meeting yet. There are three members that are here. At that meeting, it was stated that the abandonment would have to happen and that the containing two, making it one parcel, so to speak, would have to happen before we would allow that change in zoning or listing it as one property with two tax keys.
And going back to the Bristol Cone lots, it, the invoice fell on the property owner to abandon it, so they would have to hire a contractor and abandon it. And at today's cost, we're calculating it's gonna be between $6,000 and $8,000 to abandon that water service.
Yep.
That was also mentioned, that the property owner would be taking care of that fee.
The burden, the financial burden would fall on the property owner, even though we would have to go inspect, but even that could be added to those costs so that the village is reimbursed for that change. So if anybody were to make a, well, if any, you know what I'm saying.
I'll make a motion to approve the extraterritorial certified map for the Esq property, combining lot one and two, with the stipulation that the owner will have to abandon the water on the second lot at the main and incur all costs associated with that process and getting approval from DPW that it was done prior to finalizing the combined lots.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the combining of those lots under, to one, that it'd never be built on if the, if that water line, I'm gonna call it, is abandoned and that the homeowner or the person that is the owner of the property takes that financial burden. Any that is, comes up because of that, they have to cover that burden. That is not the village of Heartland.
Prior to approving the two lots.
Absolutely. So that's been moved and seconded. I don't know, you made the motion, Rick. If you want to speak first, you can. I just wanted to, in case something comes up with this down the line, I don't even want to say why, but in case, let's say there's a different homeowner down the line, do we even need to add other verbiage to just make sure that it wouldn't go through even if they're, that, until that's gone, this cannot become, this doesn't go anywhere, until that's all done and inspected and complete? Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure we kind of get some of that in the, go ahead.
Quick question, though. If, let's say, for some reason, this goes into one lot and then it gets sold, for whatever reason, and the new person wants to put it into two lots, are we gonna keep bouncing back and forth?
We would have to, absolutely.
We do.
Mm-hmm. We don't, well, yes, we would have to do that. Yep, because now there's no water service there. And so the property was originally built, even though someone bought two lots, the truth is, the developer, whoever built it, built it with the intention that there would be two lots there. And now we have a dead end, as was being described by Mr. Felkner, that if something were to happen with it, a lot of times, things dead end into like a fire hydrant, but now you could actually have where you get contaminants of stagnant water that could get into our water supply, and we don't want that. Long-winded of saying yes. Any other discussion? I will pose the question and just ask, as we're talking about this pressurized dead end, is it in our, even though we're approving it right now, is it something that actually would be beneficial to us if they went along with this? And I don't know why they would, and I'm not even suggesting to them to take this action and do this. Just leave it the way it is because new homeowners will inevitably be there down the line somewhere, but is it a help to us if they get rid of it?
Only if they combine a lot, because right now, if you, well, if you combine a lot, to Ann's point, they'll have to come back and re-separate it into two lots and make it a buildable lot again, the vacant one, and then they would have to run water service to it. So I don't know what their long-range plan is for this lot. So I would say that's, my suggestion is, would be to keep it as two lots and keep it as a buildable lot, but that is not what the paperwork says. They want to merge the two lots.
I agree, and if this came up at Plan Commission, there's a lot that could come up down the line on this. I was told, and I don't know if this changes anybody's on the board, I was told that there's one property in particular that I know of where the Gris Mill Public House is, there's like seven different tax keys, but it all falls under one, you know, lot, but they get different tax bills for it, that this would still stay two different, it'd be two different tax keys, but still be considered one lot. So they still would have to come and make the change, even though this parcel of land would have two tax keys on it.
Yeah, I understood at Plan Commission was this would just be one tax key for him, for the two lots into one, correct?
The person that owns the property, only one person can own it?
Right.
My understanding was the way they merge it is that they just leave those tax keys on, on that property.
Because I think that's opposite of what he said that night. But I could be wrong.
Yep.
I think it's, it's actually worth more to the owner the way it is now. With the water already running, I mean, he could sell that lot, and it's gonna cost him, he's already paid, I think, to put the water and sewer or whatever up to that lot, and now he'd have to pay to take it away, and then if they ever want to redo it again, they'd have to pay, I just think it's worth it just to leave it as is, but-
I'm not in disagreement. I'm really not. I don't know. I don't know what the reasoning is or who's all involved in the decision-making process on the end of interested parties in the property.
Yes, correct.
Is the best way I can say it.
I have a question, too. Has, have we checked out the math on this and found out what's the difference between tax on two parcels as compared to one parcel? I mean, is there any difference?
I can't say for sure I'm not an assessor. I cannot imagine that a property that has water ready to hook up, that all of a sudden no longer has water ready to hook up, would be as valuable as its current state. It would only make sense.
Well, from the, from being at the plan meeting, he, he didn't want, he wanted to enjoy the view and did not want to have anything built on that. Or I think he wanted to have more control by just creating one property.
But he has control.
Well, yes, but that's-
Again, we're not, we're not completely sure why they're, what-
Right, I don't know why.
I'm limited on what I can say, but there's certain things, I mean, there's a very high likelihood within the next 10 years that this will be, that this property will change hands, but I don't know what the reason is for wanting to change it.
Right, so that's, my motion was based on his interests, but there's stipulations in order to do that.
Absolutely. So with that, going that way, until this is all sorted out, Mr. Felkner will make sure to stay so that we can get that all. Come on, let's have a little fun. It's my son's birthday. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No. No.
That's a no. That motion is carried. Now we have the review and consideration of a request for a conditional use permit and business occupancy for IB26 LLC. This is 704 and 706 Rose Drive. I'm not sure if they were told they have to be here or not, but they were at the Plan Commission, and it was approved fully. If anybody has any questions, they could ask the people that were there.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit and business occupancy for IB26 LLC 704-706 Rose Drive.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the request for a conditional use permit and business occupancy for IB26 LLC at 704 and 706 Rose Drive. Again, this did come up to us unanimously from the Plan Commission where that, the requister was at, at that meeting.
I think just for the boards, the only issue that came up at the plan was possible parking issues, where he said that this application is more of a drop-off and pickup rather than parents coming to stop and watch the kids. So we didn't think that was an issue.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have other items to consider. We have presentation of the 2023 MS4 report.
So the MS4, which stands-
For separate storm sewer system, that's where you get your MS4, is required for all government entities by the state of Wisconsin DNR under code NR216.07. This is storm water for, permit for municipalities that have to report and track what is being discharged from the storm sewer into the waterways, the local waterways. This also tracks inspection of outfalls and ponds. So in, in your pamphlet, you'll see a brochure that states our DNR storm water report for the reporting year of 2023. You always do it, I know it's '24, but we do it at year end, so we get all the inspections and everything into this format. And then under, section number three, under minimum control measures, it talks about illicit discharges. It asks, the DNR's form asks us how many outfalls the municipality has. This, we have 164 of them. Seventeen that are required because they have direct outfall into the Bark River, so we have to inspect them yearly. And then on the next page, it states how many construction sites with one acre of land or more. For this, we hire Rooker and Malky to do the erosion control and outfall inspections. We own two of them with one acre or more. One is St. Charles, the other one is Paradise. St. Charles will be closing because they just received their occupancy, and next year, you'll see on there that Quick Trip will be on for the '24 project. Down below, under minimum control measures, section five, it talks about how many private-owned management facilities were inspected this year. So us, as the village, we have 28, but this, this includes like our, we reswaled all of Progress and Norton Drive, I'm sorry, Progress Drive. That, that's included in part of this inspections. What, what we did there is we made sure that we controlled all the water runoff so it does not get into the marsh, and we control it in these basins that we put in along Progress Drive. On the next page, it talks about minimum control measures in section six. This is storm water management, best management practice for inspections. This is private. So what, what we did here is we split up the village of Heartland into four sections. We took the old industrial park, which is from Cottonwood and Cardinal, I'm thinking Cardinal, and we went up to West Capital. We included all the apartment buildings that have stormwater ponds and all the industrial park ponds. Phase two, which is this year, is the South Industrial Park, which is down off Rose Drive and North Shore. The section three will be the HOAs, the river reserves, anywhere south of the railroad tracks. And four, which will be in two years, will be up in Mary Hill, Traditions, Windrush. So what happens there is they are supposed to maintain and inspect their outfalls. We have a checklist that their HOA can do it, and if they don't abide by that, we have one that's in default now on West Capital that if they don't abide by it by June, we're gonna hire, the village will hire a contractor and will charge the HOA back, and they will have to reimburse the village per their storm water maintenance agreement that they signed with the village of Heartland. On the next page, it says how many municipality-owned storm sewer management ponds do we have? We have nine of them. We have a couple in Chestnut Ridge, Nixon Park, Walnut Ridge, and the old Y site down on Cottonwood and Linwood. They also ask us if we street sweep, and if we did, how much in tons was hauled off our site. In 2023, we swept up 43 tons of material, and that includes, unfortunately, there's garbage in there, so that all has to go to hazardous waste. Nothing on your street is actually really even clean. So, and the next one, it talks about when we sucked out, we suck out our catch basins. We have 172 catch basins with sumps, and out of that material, we took out 13 tons of material. The majority of that is, you know, you'll have a few soda bottles and what have you. The majority of that is, you know, you'll have a few soda bottles and what have you, but the more, majority of that is actually leaves. But because it's in the storm sewer, that, that again, has to be hauled away as hazardous waste. Down below, under winter management, they want to know how many lane miles we have, which is 45. And then they tell us, the fill out this chart below, how much salt did we use in October, November, December of last year and January, February, and March of this year. The Village of Heartland put down 1,935 tons of salt in the, in the last winter season. That's pretty comparable. This, this year it'll be a lot less because we didn't really put it down a lot these last couple of months. So, and then it just goes to some annual expenditures and that's, our finance director fills that out. And that's pretty much it, but they, the state code says that this has to be presented to the, the board. And then we can sign off on it and send it into the DNR for our MS4 permit.
A question for you.
Yes, sir.
When you say, you've, you've been saying inspection and inspect, inspect, what's the procedure for that?
So, so if it's a private pond or outfall, the, the homeowners association can do that. If it is our structures, our guys have a form and they, they go through and fill it out. And we take pictures and we attach pictures to the GIS form.
Are you doing water sampling too or?
No, no. It's, so, but Waukesha County does do water sampling in the Bark River every spring and fall. And they check the oxygen and the oxygen level is perfect, they said, for the Bark River. Yeah. You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Felkner? That was a higher number than I thought for the stuff coming up. All right. At this time, we have the Fire Department Annual Report Presentation by our Fire Chief.
Good evening. Just going through our, our annual report to you guys. Start on page two. It's our call volume. So in 2023, the Heartland Fire Department answered 1,089 calls for service. 906 of them were EMS calls in the Village of Heartland. 78 calls, 78 EMS calls were in the Village of Merton. 183 fire calls were in the Village of Heartland and 22 fire calls were in the Village of Merton. It's our third year over 1,000 calls, so calls continue to go up and we continue to answer them, so. Slide three is just our call volume history. Again, it's showing since 2012, our call volume has steadily increased. The last three years, we've had over 1,000 calls for service out of our one single station. In June of 23, we hit a major milestone and answered 115 calls for service in that month. This is the date of the highest call volume in a single month since our department added EMS service in 1978. Slide four is our ambulance billing report. Again, we continue to have one of the best initial billing returns on our, our bills. So phase one is their initial billing. So it's our first time out to the commercial Medicare and Medicaid, which we receive 89.8% of our payments through that. To receive payments in phase one, the goal we are charged, is the goal, as we are charged more by the billing company to collect payments in phase two and three. So, report writing and review by Julie is critical in achieving this goal. Julie is the one that makes sure that all the reports are correct. So Medicare and Medicaid can't pick them apart and say, oh no, we're only going to pay you this much for them, so. So in her office, it says it's the penalty box. If you get called into Julie's office for a bad report, you're in the penalty box. Phase two, our soft collections was 4.1% of the payments received. And our phase three, which is the hard collections, was 6.2% of the payments received. In 2023, we participated in Medicare ground ambulance data collection. Purpose for the collection of data was for the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid to get full picture of the cost of operating a ground ambulance service. Once all the data is collected, and this is nationally, the determination will be made whether Medicare and Medicaid will increase their fee for service. So it's a three-phase project. Medicare and Medicaid tell you that if you don't do it, if you don't send in your report, you will lose 10% of what they pay you back. So we were very on top of it. We had everything compiled and we had it in the first day that it was open, so. Slide four is, or slide five is our 2% dues program. So received in 2023 was a total of $79,698.51. So in order to receive the 2% dues, we have to complete the following. Our yearly fire inspections, which totaled 632. Fire prevention, we hosted 32 classes and taught 762 students. Facilitate fire and EMS training, so we train monthly on fire and EMS plus extra ones if they come up. Conduct officer and business meetings and participate in community engagement opportunities, EMS standby at events, CPR training, student ride alongs, and PR events within our community. Part of that too, also, we get from the Town of Merton for the contract we have for ambulance and fire service through them, for them, so. Slide six is certifications received, notable achievements. We had two officer promotions last year, Lieutenant Goodluck and Lieutenant Pablak. They're both working out very well for us. DC Sharp received his associate degree as a paramedic technician. And there were three new emergency services instructors, as you can see on the list. Many of the people being recognized on this page work full-time in the private sector and others work with multiple fire departments. Next couple pages, seven and eight is our swearing in ceremony and our badge pinning ceremony. So September 16th, the department held a swearing in ceremony for our first year badge recipients. These members were pinned and received their helmet shield. We swore in the two new officers and honored members who had served our department for five, 10, 20, and 45 years respectively. They clean up pretty well on page eight. Yeah, I have no idea how they made it, Adam. So slide 10 is our brand new ambulance, Med 43. It's arrived just in time for the hometown celebration in July and was put into service. We retired the old 4352 in August. The 2013 Ford F-450 Super Duty XL four-wheel drive lifeline, wow, lifeline ambulance was listed on the Wisconsin and Surplus Auction Site and sold for $53,200. Highest we've ever gotten for an ambulance. The Stryker Power ProCot was sold separately and we received $5,875 for that. And then we also sold that old 2003 Ford F-250 for $4,010. Slides 12 and 13, just go over the press release for the strategic plan. That's in place, and I believe Bruce will be here next month to present that to you. On August of 23, Five Bugle Consulting was contracted to review, review our fire and EMS operations. Members were invited to be interviewed. The consensus of the interviews relayed that staffing was needed and that the volunteer combination model we are operating under can't be sustained. Members were asked to complete a SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, along with their top five core values. This material was compiled and brought to the board by Five Bugle. November of 23, a press release announced that HFD would be embarking on a strategic plan and we'd be completed by the first quarter of '24. And then slide 15, with the state aid that we received this year, the extra state money, we were allowed to hire two more full-time persons. In November, the board approved for the department to hire two additional full-time firefighter paramedics. These positions started staffing the station in January of 2024. The two new positions are in addition to the 2448 schedule and we'll staff the station 40 hours per week during our busiest times when we can't get a second, second rig out the door. Next one was the Arrowhead High School incident during a varsity basketball game. We had a student go down in there. According to our report, or according to the report, there was an AED put on and used by one of the trainers. We were dispatched at 2018 hours, en route at 2018 hours, so about 35 seconds. We arrived on scene at 2020 hours with our first due ambulance. Took the student out and took care of him at the hospital, so. Slide 17, on the 30th, Heartland Battalion 43, Med 43, Engine 43, and Truck 43 responded to Cottonwood Avenue for a motor vehicle accident, car versus building. And that was at the laundromat. On 723 MVA Highway K and Four Winds Way, Battalion 43, Med 43, and Engine 43 were dispatched out to a motor vehicle crash involving two vehicles with airbag deployment and multiple patients. That Corvette he had just purchased that day. Not a good day for him. So a couple other major calls last year, we had the mutual aid MVA in Highway 16, which was the wrong direction driver. I was the first on scene. Lake Country at the time was running with a, a very short staff and they were just coming back from another call. So I took command of the scene and then once, once their battalion chief got on scene, we shared the command. Flight for life was called for the passenger in the, the car that you can see that's in the ditch. Unfortunately, she succumbed to her injuries a couple of days later at the hospital for that. We were also out in Oconwalk a couple of times for structure fires. This was the Mexican restaurant downtown. Truck 43, Chief 243, and Battalion 43 were requested to the scene. And then now we go into our fire prevention stuff. So as I said before, we had 32 classes, over 764 students. Taught them how smoke detectors work, get low, crawl below the smoke, check your door to see if it's hot, get out and stay out. Safe meeting place, when dial 911, know your address, never hide or be afraid of a firefighter. So a lot of times we've been going to the schools with the engine and the ambulance. So the duty crew plus a couple of people that are just going to teach the class. Otherwise, a lot of times they have been coming down to the station also. The older kids will go through the house, the younger kids, we just have them outside and show them the truck and that and the ambulance, so. And then it kind of goes into our training, some of our trainings, our new hire orientation. So we, after we get a few people on that are new, we run them through a weekend orientation. We start Friday night with just the general layout of the department and what's expected of them. Saturday, they do EMS and Sunday they do fire and they ended up with, they ended up on Sunday with that little burn that they have. So it just shows them backdrafts, airflow and all that stuff and how to control the air flows and all that. So they do donning drills, as you can see in the upper corner. And we had, had a couple of guys that came to me and asked to be in charge of this, to work on this, and they came up with a plan for me. And every time they, they send out a questionnaire to the people that go through it, asking them what they thought of it, what they thought could be improved. And they've been getting very high marks on all, all the stuff that they put together, so. It's very nice to see, you know, we don't, we don't lose people that just kind of come in and kind of get lost in the system and then end up not staying with us, so. We had extrication training. We had a number of those this year. We had a bus that we were able to cut up and burn and do a bunch of practices in. We had a underride. We had a car that was put underneath the bus with patients inside and extricated them. We also had, later in the fall, we had two semis that were donated that we were able to use. One we used, we put fire inside also and were able to do that. So just getting them some different, different extrication techniques. Next one is our ladder operations. DPW is nice enough to let us come down and, and use some of the buildings down there to put up ladders and, and that. And we thank them for that. We also check the roofs for them, make sure everything's good up there, that there's no leaks. So the next one is our Bark River Explorers Post. So these are, this is run through the Boy Scouts of America. We have a number of people that run this. One with their, one, a couple of them have children in it. We have one that's, he's a high school senior this year. And because of this, he was able to get into the dual enrollment program at WCTC. So he's leaving high school with his Fire One and EMT Basic, so. And then just some of the public relations stuff, our Operation Homeless Veterans. We love supporting those guys. They support us a lot, so we go down there and put the flag up for them. Couple hours on each night, usually Friday and Saturday night. Thank God it's been warmer the last couple of years. And then Heartland Hometown Celebration, it's all generally an all-hands-on-deck. We have just a couple of pieces usually in the parade because the rest are out on the parade route, securing the parade route and making sure everybody's safe. And generally, the last couple of years, we've been getting at least one ambulance called during the parade, so. Our pancake breakfast for the association, we do this yearly, usually the first or second weekend in October. Just kind of our give back to the community. We don't ask for money, we just ask for donations, whatever they feel. So sometimes you get $2 and sometimes you get $100 for a pancake breakfast, so. Food collection for the holiday week is, we decorated the bin. Some of the kids from the department and then took it down the night of the holiday train and put it over at, at the ice cream shop, Little Dipper's. And it was amazing, the amount of food that we collected down there that night, so. Tree lighting, again, all hands on deck. We close off the intersection with PD and, and keep everybody safe while they light the tree. And then the last one is the holiday train. Any questions?
Yeah, where, where do you do your practice burns, like with that bust and all that?
Down at the DPW in the back, yeah.
Just curious. Do you ever announce those? I'd like to watch them.
I can, yeah, absolutely. We've got, right now, we've got a van. And then there was a couple of other possibilities of some pretty interesting vehicles that we were going to be able to cut up. We were just, I was just talking with the guys from TNT Rescue, which is up in Northlake. They want to donate two multi-tool extrication pieces to us. So it's one of their brand new pieces, it's just coming out. So he says, come on up. He says, we'll show you the, the plant and everything and we want to donate those two pieces to you, so.
Chief, I just wanted to ask if there is, obviously, it's been a year for a lot of learning for a lot of us, some on different sides of things. You guys in the department and, and us on the board, but do the, overall, is the, are the people that are serving in the department in any of the different capacities, are they seeing, do they feel that the village is taking seriously some of the concerns that were there as we see trends continuing into the future, like we've talked about for staffing and various things, space? Things like that, do you feel that there's a disconnect or are we doing an okay job with the communication to let them know we take it serious?
I'm pretty sure that they're, yeah. I mean, this, the strategic plan has helped a lot. It's given a lot of people hope for the future and, you know, just, we just want to keep pushing forward with it. They, they, it, it's a very happy group. I mean, the walk in there and some of the, some of the kids that are in there, and I mean, they're kids compared to me, but. But it's just, it's, it's fun to be there. It's fun to be there on a daily basis, listening to them and, and watching them progress in their careers, you know? Seen some of them coming out just as firefighters and now they're in paramedic class and just fabulous people to be around, so.
Awesome. Does anyone have any questions for Chief? Good report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice to know, Chief.
Well, he's already got the microphone. We might as well move right to announcements.
Yeah, not, not too much other than that going on. We've been answering calls. We've been meeting with architects and engineers and, and stuff the last week or so. We've got a couple more that we're going to listen to and, and then hopefully come back to you guys with some ideas and progress from there. Other than that, call volume is steady. The two new guys are just fabulous, great guys to work with. We, we have one that, we moved him to a 2448 shift because one of my other full timers is on a leave right now. And the other guy is in school. And the other guy is in school, he's giving us as much time as he can, getting his 40 hours in, so. Still haven't quite seen the, the impact during the day because sometimes he's working nights and that, so. But, uh, they're both doing a great job, so very happy with them.
Yeah, just echo what Chief Jambert said. We've been meeting with some architects, construction management firms, try to figure out what our best steps, uh, to move forward are, so we're hopeful they'll come with some ideas for the board in the next couple of weeks. Um, the Waukesha County Communication Center, we had a core update I sent you guys about, just that they're updating to that cloud system. Unfortunately, that got delayed, they hit some technological hiccups, and they're still working through some of that, so that has not yet occurred. Um, so hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, they'll make that switch. And then finally, with the hiring of Officer Joseph Suther, that brings us to full staffing. Our previous hire, Officer Taylor Weiss, is doing phenomenal through our road training program. So we're hopeful she'll be off in the next couple of weeks, and Joe will be hitting the ground running here this week.
Um, so recently, we, just this last week, we got to see the results of the ground penetrating radar at our cemeteries, the middle and our upper cemetery. It's actually really cool to see the results that, uh, or find information that we didn't have, per se. Um, finding out where, where everything is located up there. And we actually had, uh, R&amp;M coming and fly a drone, too, uh, to, uh, they're gonna be able to take that drone footage and overlay that on our current GIS system. So we're gonna have a better track of our records up there and know where to put, uh, new graves. So it's, uh, very crucial information to have, and it worked out really well. I'm hoping to, uh, see the benefits of that, you know, in the future here, definitely. Um, we are also currently going through the interview process. Right now, we have a couple candidates that we've interviewed. Uh, we're gonna go through some discussion on those candidates, and, uh, we'll get back to you on that.
Last, last week, we received, uh, a plow truck chassis. It's been on order for over a year. That came in, so we checked it all over, and it's in Madison. They're gonna start working on the equipment and the body and the hoist and the hydraulics for the plowing wing. So, moving forward.
Leo, are we getting rid of a truck, then?
We will, after we get it all done.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually talked about that today a little bit.
Do we still have the one, um, vehicle that was painted after the fact? There was one that was painted, it wasn't painted, like most things are painted orange?
Yeah, the Little Ranger.
So it had a bunch of rust in that? Do we still have that one?
Eh, we have it.
Okay.
It looks okay. It looks good, no, that was the Little Ranger. No. All our plow trucks are good.
Does our clerk have anything that she would like to add in announcements?
I do not.
Oh, right, wow. Happy birthday, Doha. It's my son's birthday today, 19 years old. Um, everybody has said everything that's going on, so I really don't have anything to add.
I will make a motion that we adjourn.
It's been moved in seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting's adjourned.